Conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. This is an opening again of the Harwich Board of Selectments meeting for January 26, 2021, where in fact did open the meeting at 5:45 and then went into executive session with the intent of after that to return to open meetings, and that's where we are now. We had two items on the executive session. One was to consider support of a real estate, if the contract real estate, real property of the charity requires that the open meeting may have a detrimental effect on negotiating position of the public body. We discussed that for some time and came to the decision to support an application to CPC for purchases of this property. The second item was pursuant to MGL 38, Section 21A, paragraph, to conduct strategy session to contract negotiations for the town administrator. We did discuss that and approved a contract for appointment of Joe Powers to the town administrator. I'm very pleased to make that report, and the contract is for a, to end in June 30, 2024. So our congratulations, Joe, and we look forward to another several years of keeping you busy.
Well, if I may, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Certainly, thank you for your efforts, and I thank each and every member of the board. I'm very excited to continue forward and certainly with the support you've given me and the contract behind me, I will continue to endeavor on and do everything I can to continue to earn your trust and that of the community. So thank you all very much. I truly appreciate it.
Thank you, Joe. Moving then next to pledge of allegiance. If you'll join with me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Joe. The floor is yours for COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to you members of the board. There's been quite a bit of activity through Governor Baker's office the last few days and certainly today. I hope the board members were able to receive, I sent an email out late this afternoon, sharing Public Health Director Megan Eldridge's presentation on vaccines, major announcements that came out recently, including today. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to turn it over to Megan Eldridge. Megan, if you want me to give you presenter rights so you can show your presentation, because I think it's critical, Mr. Chairman, that we get this information out on the next steps in the vaccine process.
Thank you, Joe, and hello, Megan.
Good evening, everybody. I do have my normal COVID-19 update for you. I'll go through that, and then I'll take questions on the cases and the preopening or reopening information that's in the normal COVID-19 update. And then after, we have a minute to digest that, I do have a presentation regarding vaccine distribution. So I will start with my normal update, which is mostly statistics. We do remain in the red. Harwich is still a high-risk community. We have, as of, let's see, as of last week, last Friday, we had a total of 447 cases in the town of Harwich since the beginning last March. We continue to follow 27 active cases. A few have come on board and a few have recovered since Friday's report was written. Wingate is doing better. We're looking a little bit there at Wingate, not seeing as many new positives coming out of there. And our percent positivity has gone up since last week. We're at 7.52, which is slightly higher than last week. And again, that positivity rate is based off of how many tests were administered to Harwich residents and how many of those were positive in the last two weeks. So as you can see, we are higher than we were last time I spoke to you. The cases this week are stemming out of a lot of after-school sports. We have seen a lot of positives from both kids and coaches and parents that are involved in private ice hockey leagues. We have been talking with the private leagues, and the VNA has been extremely helpful trying to track down those contacts and making sure everyone knows there was an exposure at the ice rink at Charles Moore over in Orleans. And that did result in a few positives in the school system as well as residents. And I've been asked to remind parents of kids that are in hockey leagues or basketball leagues, whether they're public or private, they are considered a high-risk sport, and they're allowed with precautions. But if one player or coach is positive during a game or a practice, usually everyone on the court or the ice has to quarantine and is considered a high-risk, it's a high-risk sport, high-spreader type of sport. So if your kid is playing a game and someone from the other team turns out positive and you find out that a day or two later, your child will have to go into quarantine, and that means remote school, no after-school activities, that sorts of thing. So just keep that in mind, that hockey and basketball are currently allowed in this phase with precautions. They are high-risk sports, and the Department of Public Health considers them to be high-spreader events. So if you participate in those things, just keep in mind that you may have to quarantine and stay out of school for an extended period of time. Moving on to reopening effective yesterday, Governor Baker lifted some restrictions that were temporary in nature. We are still in Phase 3 of Step 1, but there was a temporary order in place for businesses to close by 9:30. And as of yesterday morning, that restriction has been lifted. So businesses that had to close at 9:30, which there's a list on your screen, restaurants, indoor and outdoor events, performance venues, gatherings, private or public, those things had to close by 9:30 or stop by 9:30 last week, and now they're reopened. Other parts of the Phase 3 Step 1 are still in effect, which are the 25% occupancy rates for restaurants and retail stores. Those places still are required to maintain 25% occupancy, and that's pretty harsh for some restaurants to go down to 25% indoors, but for a bit longer, we're looking at that restriction. The other thing that the governor lifted was the Stay-at-Home Advisory, which encouraged people to be home by 9:30, and that was to prevent social gatherings from becoming spreader events, and that has been lifted. I'm going to do vaccines separately. So my last part of the usual is let people know that testing is still available at many sites across the Cape. We got questions on where can I get tested, what are the differences between these tests? Outer Cape Health is offering a free rapid test. You don't have to have symptoms. They actually prefer this test to be given to people without symptoms. It's kind of a put-your-finger-in-the-air-to-figure-out-where-you-are-at-as-far-as-your-exposure. You can call their site to get an appointment for an asymptomatic test, and that's the rapid antigen test. It's very accurate. There are other tests available that are called PCR tests, and these are what is required for traveling to get back into Massachusetts regular business. That is also offered at Outer Cape, but it's also offered at Cape Cod healthcare sites, which are open seven days a week by calling their testing line. There are Binax tests, which you've probably heard of, which are these rapid tests, and that's what some school settings are able to use. And that is what the free test is being offered at Outer Cape Health. So I'm going to pause and take questions about our cases, testing.
Megan, I have a couple. The number of tests, is that plateauing, or is it increasing, decreasing?
The number of daily, of weekly tests seems to be going up. We were ranging in the 800 or 900 tests every two-week range, and now we're, we were at 1,200 last week. This week, our total two-week is 1,400. So it seems like more and more people are getting tested, and that's a good thing. I think testing is more widely available, and people are not as scared to get tested. The results are coming back in a day or two. So we are testing more and more people every week.
Are, does any of the schools, for instance, are they using pool testing yet, or is that in other areas of the country? What's the status of that?
Monomoy is not using it yet. They're looking into it. It does take some work between the school unions and other human resource types of things that they have to figure out. It's something they're looking into. I believe Falmouth and Barnstable are using it, but as far as I know, Monomoy is not. It is something that I've talked to them about, and it's on their radar, but they have not contracted to do that yet.
Thank you, Megan. Other questions? I guess you can move on to the vaccine.
Okay.
The exciting stuff.
Yes, what everybody's been waiting for. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we get a lot of questions every day on, how can I get a vaccine? Where am I in order for getting a vaccine? So this is a fairly short presentation that hopefully answers everyone's questions and points them in the right direction on where to get more information. Right now, we are in Phase 1 of a three-phase vaccine plan. Currently, we're finishing up Phase 1. Everyone in Phase 1 is now eligible to get a vaccine, and we'll be moving on to Phase 2. And Department of Public Health has announced that Phase 2 will open up on February 1st. Phase 1, which we're in now, if you have not gotten a vaccine and you are in Phase 1, there's lots of ways to get a vaccine. These are the groups that are eligible now, and we've done all of our first responders, long-term care staff and residents have been done. And right now, we're working on home-based healthcare workers and congregate care staff and those non-COVID-facing healthcare workers, those physical therapists and acupuncturists and people that work on people, other people in the healthcare world. Those are now eligible to get vaccinated. If you're in Phase 1, the site requires treatment. You can't walk onto any site. First, I suggest you contact your employer to see if they're offering shots. Some places are. If they're not, then you can go onto the mass.gov website and find the map where all COVID vaccine sites are going to be listed. People have asked, how do these sites know that I'm a first responder or that I'm a nurse? Or once we get into other phases, how will they know that I have two comorbidities? The state has developed a self-attestation form, which is available both online and as a downloadable form where you can print out and bring with you to a clinic. Every clinic is going to have different eligibility criteria. For instance, some may say, we're only taking Harwich residents, we're only taking this type of resident, we're only taking first responders, we're only taking people that are 75 and older. So before you book a site, make sure you're eligible to go to that site, because they'll ask for your self-attestation form, and some may ask for employment verification. So if you say you're a grocery store worker, not only do you have to submit the self-attestation form, you may have to show a recent pay stub. So the next slide, when you go to this website, this mass.gov/info, details, locations, it brings up a map like this. And this is the map as of this morning for Phase 1 vaccination sites. Green stars are regional clinics that anyone in the region can go to. Purple stars are pharmacies, are CVS pharmacies, the ones in South Yarmouth, Hyannis, and Mashpee. They're currently taking appointments. And once you move off Cape, you have the red stars, which is Lett Stadium and Fenway Park. So once you click on one of these stars, it takes you to that clinic's website, and you have to register through that clinic. And in a later slide, I show you how to do that. Phase 2 begins February 1st. A map that I showed you is going to be populated with clinics that will start vaccinating February 1st. So starting tomorrow, you can go back to this map, and more sites will be on it, including the Stop &amp; Shop in East Harwich, Walgreens, several more CVS pharmacies. And you can sign up if you're in the next phase of Phase 2. You can sign up starting tomorrow, but you won't be able to get your vaccine until after February 1st. Phase 2, and there's four groups in Phase 2, and they are going group by group. So the first group is ages 75 and older. Once that group gets started and is well underway, probably two to three weeks from now, I'm sorry, two to three weeks into February, they'll announce, and they is the Department of Public Health, will announce that Group 2 in Phase 2 is then eligible for signing up for a vaccine. And Group 2 is everyone over the age of 65, and if you're under 65, you are eligible if you have two or more comorbidities, which are conditions that you had a higher risk for severe illness because of COVID-19. And they're listed here on the slide, range from cancer to pregnancy, smoking, type 2 diabetes, having COPD, chronic kidney disease. There are, you have to have at least two of these conditions to be Group 2 of Phase 2. So how do you get a vaccine once you're in Phase 2 and we're all in Phase 2? Again, all appointments are done online right now through this mass.gov/COVID-19-vaccine website. Every clinic will be linked to the site. Stop &amp; Shop will have a link, CVS, Walgreens, several grocery stores that have signed up with the program can become sites and will get a star on the map. And you can go to the map and click on the star closest to you and sign up for an appointment. Like I said, the stars will start to show up on the 27th, which is tomorrow, and the sites are added a couple times a week. They may be added or deleted based on vaccine availability. So if a site fills up and isn't able to take more appointments, the star will go away. If another site opens up, another star will pop up. We know that there is going to be many more stars, so there will be other opportunities to get vaccine. It's Phase 2, map shows up. There will be different color stars. Purple ones go away, but blue ones start to appear, and those are private pharmacies, whether they're within grocery stores or standalone. When you click on one of those stars, it takes you to a site that looks kind of like this. Click on it, and there are prompts to put in your name and address and phone number to schedule your appointment. We know that these sites are going to be quickly overrun. There is not enough vaccine all at once to get to the people. So this is where the bad news kind of comes in. And again, this was news we heard just this afternoon. The town of Harwich and Barnstable County, we are both ready, willing, and able to stand up vaccine clinics for our residents. We have the staff, we have the location, but at this point, we don't have the vaccine. It's going to a lot of places a little bit at a time. We use both the county and the VNA as our providers, and a provider is a location that the state sends vaccine to. So a provider can be your doctor, it can be a pharmacy, it can be a public health department. Barnstable has a public health department. The county has a public health department where they have their own vaccine providers, where they give vaccine year-round. They have a public health nurse that is able to hold a refrigerator and keep records of vaccines to become a provider. The town of Harwich is not a provider. Many towns on the Cape are not, and that's why we partner with the VNA and Barnstable County. Today, the Department of Public Health announced that because of high demand and not enough distribution of the vaccine, not enough allocations, that they are putting a cap on vaccine allocations to all providers. And this cap is going to start at 100 doses of the Moderna vaccine or 975 doses of the Pfizer vaccine per week. That is a very small number. We can't exactly hold a clinic for all residents with that amount of doses, because we rely on the county and the VNA, and those are providers which will be getting 100 doses a week for all the towns that they serve. We're working on this. We are trying to get more, excuse me, more vaccine per week, but it's extremely difficult to guarantee doses to one particular town if you're only getting 100 doses a week. Those doses have to go to second doses that first responders and people in the first phase are waiting for, and they have to go to those 75 and older starting February 1st. So even though Phase 2 opens up on February 1st, it might not be all that easy to schedule yourself a vaccine, because the stores that are doing it in person, these walk-in clinics, they only have so much space with social distancing and keeping everyone safe. And because it's a new vaccine, everyone who gets their first shot needs to be observed or sit for 15 to 30 minutes after their shot. That really puts a crunch on space. So we have limited vaccine coming out to providers from the Department of Public Health. This is something they announced today. It's very disappointing, and we hope to come up with some solutions. However, we can't plan a town clinic at this point, because we will have very limited supply of vaccine. So continuing on to Phase 2, priority groups, the education, sanitation, food and beverage workers, these people are in Group 3 of the vaccine plan. And then the last group, the fourth group, includes everyone with just one comorbidity. Phase 3, which is scheduled after April, will be open to everyone, the general public. And so it's just some frequently asked questions that we get every day. You do not have to be a Massachusetts resident to go to a mass vaccination site. They are asking that you live, work, or go to school in Massachusetts, but it is not a requirement that you live here permanently. If the town holds an individual clinic in the future, once we are guaranteed to have enough vaccine to hold a clinic, we will have residency restrictions because of the short supply. Private clinics might have their own eligibility restrictions. Like I said, you may have to fit into their eligibility criteria. The self-attestation form is required to self-certify eligibility. The vaccine is free. No one should charge you for a vaccine. They may take your insurance card, because they can charge your insurance for administration costs, so they can bill for administration costs, but there should be no fee, no copay. This is an extremely important and helpful slide, helplines and websites. We have all the information that we have, all the information we have, we get from the state, mass.gov/COVID-19/vaccine. Calling us, we are going to first refer you to this website. So please, 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 visit the website and try to get your question answered before calling us, before calling the county. We are just going to reiterate the information that you can find on this website. We are, again, overwhelmed with phone calls and emails, just as we were at the beginning, and we may not be able to get back to you as quickly as you'd like. So please try to empower yourself with information by going to the mass.gov website. It has lots of information if you click around on it. Once, we do hold regional vaccine clinics, which we are still planning on doing. Once we have more vaccine, there will be regional clinics, and that information can be found at the barnstablecounty.org site. When we announce more availability of vaccine and the possibility of doing local clinics in Harwich, will be posted on the mass.gov website. It will be widespread. Calling now to get on a waitlist, it's not possible. We don't have a waitlist. If you still can't find information through the websites, county has a helpline. They are quite busy today. I was told they had over 1,200 calls before 2 o'clock in the afternoon. It is staffed by MRC volunteers, so if you call, please be nice. They are very nice people, doing the best that they can. They have a lot of great information and will call you back if you leave a message. The number is 774-330-3001. And then if you still want to speak to a real-life person, you can call the Harwich Health Department, or you can email us with your phone number, and we can give you a call back. Our phone number is 508-430-7509. I am ready for questions. Please don't shoot Messenger. I am ready for questions. Please don't shoot messenger.
Thank you, Megan. Uh, questions, comments? I, I think you may have overwhelmed us, but, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll be patient, I guess, to get our shot.
Megan?
Yes, Ed.
The, uh, PowerPoint that you presented, um, is, was that part of the packet?
That information just came out this afternoon, so I put that together this afternoon so I couldn't get in today's packet, but it was emailed to all board of selectmen members and it's going, I've, I've emailed it to Jamie to put on the website, so it, it will be publicly available.
Good. It's had a lot of good information.
Thank you.
Other comments? Again, thank you, Megan. Uh, Joe, I'll go back to you.
Mr. Chairman, at this point I have nothing more to add for COVID-19. Um, I just want to confirm what Megan had said for the board. Uh, the email was sent, uh, to you all this afternoon at 4:32 and we're going to have staff immediately update that to the website. So the PowerPoint will be there, uh, and all the information that Megan mentioned. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, I would, um, turn it over to the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce. Um, and hopefully we have some more good news because I think the businesses see some relief based on Governor Baker's recent announcements, but, uh, I'll defer to Cindy on that statement.
Great. Well, good evening, everyone. Um, first I wanted to, um, they don't usually get thanked, but, um, as you all looked outside your window, uh, tonight and as I left the office and drove home fearishly to get online here, um, wanted to thank the DPW guys, um, outstanding and treating the, um, our salt and whatever we do nowadays, um, to treat the roads, but thank you to the guys, um, for keeping us all safe. And then second, before I go into my report, congratulations, Joe. Looking forward to continuing the great collaboration and partnership that we have developed. So thank you to the board. Um, we are all very excited for this moving forward. Um, restaurants, as, uh, Joe and Megan mentioned, um, the 9:30 was rescinded. So this has, um, certainly been a, uh, welcome thing to, uh, have. Um, businesses are, the restaurants are seeing it in waves. Some nights inside dining is, uh, great, other nights, um, its takeout is absolutely crazy. So, um, thank you. Please continue to support the restaurants. Um, they're all excited to be open, those that are. Um, it is all updated on our website, so please refer to that. Um, also, uh, noticed driving around this weekend, a lot of people out and about, um, at variety of retailers. Uh, weather was up in East Harwich at Harwich Paint and Decorating. Um, they've got some new, uh, shades that they're promoting for energy, uh, savings. So that, they were busy up there, um, RPM and Hinckley's all, uh, people are working on their homes, uh, whether they just bought a home or they're updating it. So glad to see that. I was also down in Harwich Port in, um, walking around. Um, saw the candy store was, uh, a big hit this weekend, um, and, uh, the Nines Art Gallery. A woman was in, uh, buying two paintings from, um, Lauren there, uh, very excited to see everyone out spending money in town. Um, and then also, um, finally, the, uh, radio campaign that I mentioned last week. I'm getting a lot of comments on that. People are hearing about Harwich all the time. So that's a good thing. We're bringing people to, uh, the town and, uh, reminding them that they can, uh, shop locally, online, um, and, uh, in the stores. So, uh, tending, uh, restaurants and the small businesses. I think that is everything that I had. Just, uh, continue to watch our Facebook page for updates. People, what businesses are doing, um, we'll continue to share as well as, um, updating, um, the website with, uh, all the new stuff. Megan, if you can email that, um, presentation to me as well, I will, um, update our website with all of that too, because that was great stuff for everyone to see. And other than that, thank you again and continue to support Harwich and our small businesses.
Thank you, Cindy. Comments, questions for Cindy? We'll do our best indeed to support our, our area.
Well, we're all doing it, so thank you all.
Is anyone, Joe, has, uh, s- sent in for public, uh, comment?
I'll try it again with the microphone on. There's no one in the queue.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Next on the agenda is annual committee presentations and we'll start with the Harwich Cultural Council.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Tina Games here, the Chair of the Harwich Cultural Council. I'm joined by Dinah Lane, who is our Secretary. Dinah and I are going to kind of do a little team thing here tonight with our presentation. I also want to recognize two other council members that are in our audience. I see Sharon Moore and Bernadette Waystack. Uh, so thank you ladies for joining us. Um, cultural council, first of all, Joe, congratulations, uh, in many capacities. I'm looking forward to working with you. So welcome. Congratulations. Starting, uh, with the questions that you sent us, uh, all cultural council members, uh, have been sworn in and the state ethics testing is up to date. We actually have a fairly new council, so everybody is very, very current. We don't have any attendance problems. We, uh, have met our quorum, so we're really good there. We are posting our agendas and minutes in a very timely fashion, so we don't have any problems there. I do want to mention quickly, uh, before I highlight a few items, you have a report in your packet, but I do want to, uh, mention that I, as the Chair, am term limited. Uh, because the cultural council, we work closely with the state. Uh, we can only serve two full terms. So in June, I will have served my six years and I will be stepping off the council. So this will be the last time you will see me in this capacity. And I just wanted to mention that because of this, the cultural council has been working actively on a succession plan. So we are working with our members right now to make sure that we have leadership that's going to transfer over, uh, starting on July 1st. So we have been working, making sure that everybody is up to speed because that's very important. As I move off the council, making sure that it's in good hands and I know it will be. So I just wanted to just highlight a couple of things and then Dinah has a couple of things that she's going to highlight. Uh, just for our listening audience, the Harwich Cultural Council is a town-appointed committee uh, with a goal to enrich the cultural lives of our citizens. We are one of 329 local councils across the state. I do want to just note that we have, um, nine members or we have space for nine members. We currently have seven, so we do have two vacancies. If anybody's listening and interested, we would very much love to, uh, kind of have you interview and put in an application for our cultural council. And when I leave at the end of June, we'll have another vacancy, so there'll be three for us. Uh, I do want to recognize our current council members, of course Dinah and myself, Bernadette Waystack and Sharon Moore. Uh, we also have Charles Barnes and Peter Hollis. And I want to take a moment to recognize outgoing members that left our council in the spring and over the summer. That was Roseanne Shapiro, Kathy Tean and Lorinda Raquel. And I want to thank them very much for their service. And also it goes without saying that, uh, the pandemic has affected everyone, including the cultural council. Our whole entire grant cycle this year was thrown completely off. Uh, Dinah's going to talk about that in just a moment, but I do want to just say that at this time every year, we're already able to tell you, you know, who we've given grants out to for the year of 2021, but we are two months behind. So I can just share with you that we did have 25 grant applications coming into the fiscal year 2021. And we are right now finalizing who we will be giving grants to. We have earmarked $10,000, so, um, we will have some lucky, uh, grant recipients getting that money. Uh, and we'll be making that announcement mid-February. So I just wanted to update you on that. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dinah because she has a few things that she wants to highlight. Dinah?
Thank you, Tina. Uh, I also just wanted to mention that Chris Banks is a member of the committee now and she is the new treasurer. So, uh, that's, that's a great thing too. Um, Tina, because of the, the low enrollment of the committee, uh, Tina has been doing a number of the jobs and now we are, as she says, trying to spread things around and prepare for her departure. So, uh, Chris, Chris has kindly volunteered to be the treasurer and she was voted in recently. So that's, that's a great thing. Yeah, so the pandemic really changed the way, uh, we had to, had to, uh, deal with the grants and mostly the applicants who were, who were honored this past year with grants really were affected very strongly. So, uh, many of them had not finished, obviously, their, their, um, their projects by the time, uh, the shutdown occurred in March. And so many had to pivot and do something very different, uh, and it, a lot of their presentations do look different. So we, we purposely and also with the guidance of the MCC, uh, reached out to each of the applicants to be sure that, um, they had the support they needed to figure out how to be able to fulfill their grants as much as they possibly could. Only a few have not been able to do it at all because of the nature of their original application. But most of them really have, have been able to adjust admirably and present as they had hoped in some way or another. So that, that's really great. We also, uh, as a result of the pandemic, we had to cancel our information session, uh, which is always usually, always held in August. And so this year we weren't able to do that in person and we had hoped to do it on a go-to-meeting, but the go-to-meeting platform was so full over the summer that we weren't able to book time with that. So instead we were able to offer an information session on channel 18 with an interview and, uh, an opportunity to, uh, really answer any questions that people might have. Um, and the recording was shared with the public and it aired on channel 18 um, and YouTube and the HCC Facebook page. So fundraising is actually, uh, something that the HCC has done in the past and we had a wonderful, uh, opportunity suggested to us, which was to have an imaginary candlelight dinner. And that's a fundraiser, um, which is very appropriate, of course, for this particular year with people not being able to go out. And so, uh, people were asked to please donate based on what they might do if they were coming to a candlelight dinner. Um, and so that was, that allowed supporters to really contribute at varying levels and that will help, help us fund future grants. Let's see. Right. Oh, yes, the cultural district. So goals for 2021. Um, the cultural district is something that has been in the works for quite a while with the Mass Cultural Council and also working with, um, Cindy at the Harwich, at the Chamber of Commerce. And if, we were in the final, final, uh, um, throes of working that through when the pandemic hit. And so we are still waiting for the final designation and we're hoping that that is going to be able to go forward sometime in the next year. As for, uh, our grant reception, which we always hold in order to honor the grant recipients, uh, we are hoping to hold that, uh, either, either virtually or in person as we may, sometime in the spring. Um, hopefully in the spring, possibly in the summer. But that, that is where we allow, uh, the grantees to describe their programs a little bit and honor them for their work. Oh, yes, the HCC is also exploring new fundraising opportunities and we've been doing that for a while and we're hoping to collaborate with local artists on a project. And public awareness has really grown, I think, of the HCC, particularly in the last few years. And now we are employing Facebook and Instagram and collaborations with the Harwich Cultural Center and Channel 18. We also hope to hold our annual grant information session in August at the Harwich Cultural Center. But if we are not able to, we will find another way to get the information to the public. So, uh, we are doing our very best to, uh, power through as, as is everybody. And it's been actually a great year and we've had wonderful, wonderful applicants and great grants. So, um, projects being done for the town of Harwich. So we're, we're overall very pleased with the year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dinah. Before we take, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, before we take questions, I also wanted, uh, just for the public, uh, I, because I mentioned $10,000 earlier and I, I think it's important for the public to know that our grant funding comes from three sources, which is we get a, a grant allocation from the Mass Cultural Council every year. We also are very honored, uh, to receive support from the town of Harwich. At the town meeting every year, there's a, uh, an article on the warrant and the town of Harwich has been very generous to give us funding through that mechanism. And as Dinah talked about, we also do our own fundraising. So with those three pots, we put it together and then we come up with a grant allocation amount every year, which for 2021 will be $10,000. And with that, I'm happy to take your questions.
Are there questions, comments? I just have one comment. I, I've, uh, excuse me. I'm going to turn to Florida Dawn first.
Yeah, I mean, just as an overarching thing, I want to congratulate, uh, the cultural council in general. I mean, once you get past the obvious thoughts of taking care of your elderly and your, your kids, uh, and the basic services, one of the things that makes it meaningful for within any community is the access to arts and culture. We have arguably, uh, one of the premier live theater venues in the Northeast, not just Cape Cod. Uh, we have, uh, tremendous artist community here. And, uh, we should congratulate ourselves on that and, and, and make a recommitment, uh, again, as we move forward to continue to, uh, support the arts in general. So thanks to everybody who's been involved with this and I know a lot of you folks, so thanks.
I'll just say, I very much admire your, uh, creativity and flexibility during this pandemic years. We seem to be doing that through all, all the town committees, but, uh, job well done to keep the system going. Uh, Michael, did you, uh, wave or?
No, I could, uh, echo Dawn's comments. Thank you guys very much.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on then to the, uh, next item on agenda is a public presentation by, uh, I see, uh, Dana there, but the Cape Cod Theater Company. And I think this is exciting news, so. Nina, can I turn it over to you?
Mr. Chairman, there is a presentation by the Energy Committee.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to go too fast. We'll go through the Energy Committee. Thank you, Joel, for keeping track.
Hi, this is Valerie Bell from the Energy Committee and, uh, we did not have a very active year last year due to COVID. Uh, we're having our first virtual meeting this year later in the week. Uh, we are a small committee, uh, myself, uh, Barry Worth, uh, Chris Siznick, and we have, uh, a new member, Jacqueline Green, who just came on recently. Uh, we are, we were very excited to, um, when Harwich decided to pass the climate emergency in the last town meeting, uh, we continue to get, uh, regular updates from Cape Light Compact and C-Vac. Uh, I know there are some C-Vac projects that are pending for Harwich and we're very excited to get those over the finish line and, um, hopefully get those on board pretty quickly. Uh, our Energy Committee continues to meet with other energy committees on the Cape and Islands. And there's a, we will be hoping to, uh, work with those energy committees for a region-wide program called Energize Cape Cod, which will be a program where, um, be facilitating, uh, residents, uh, to tap into some renewable energy. We either buy solar or heat pumps or, uh, something like that. Um, Cape Light Compact is offering their Main Streets program. And, um, Cindy, if you're listening, uh, Lindsay will be in touch with you. We were scheduled to do a Main Streets program with Cape Light Compact this past spring, but of course, uh, that got canceled. Uh, Cape Light Compact is going to restart that program and we're back on the list. Uh, and so, uh, that'll allow our small businesses in Harwich to get some really, um, free, uh, upgrades for energy efficiency. Uh, we haven't set the date for that yet, but Cindy will be talking with Cape Light Compact and we'll get back to you on that. I, I have met with the Harwich Climate Action Committee. I, I have met with the Harwich Climate Action Committee. Uh, and, uh, they're very interested in partnering with us. Uh, particularly in just a public awareness, uh, kind of, uh, role uh, for, uh, climate issues and how they relate to Harwich, the Cape and the world. And, uh, bookkeeping, uh, we are up to date on our ethics, uh, state ethics, uh, program. Uh, we do, we continue to publish our agendas in minutes when we have them. Any questions?
Questions, comments? For Valerie?
Just to thank her for her efforts.
Thank you, Don.
Yeah, thank you. It's great. Uh, I'm excited to hear about the Main Streets program. That, uh, that will help us all, I think.
Yeah, Larry?
Thanks again. Uh, Michael?
I, I'd echo that. Thank you for, thank you for the committee's efforts. And Valerie, I'm not sure if anyone's reached out to you yet or not, but, um, uh, we did lose Leo Kakounis as our representative to CVEC. And your name was put forward by him in, in his departure as somebody that might be interested. So that seat is vacant. If it is something you're interested in, um, you'd have to go to town hall and fill out or, or go online and download a form. And same way you got on this committee, but uh, if you're interested, we'd, we'd love to have your representation, I think.
Thank you, Michael. Yeah, I talked to Liz Arg. Go a little bit about that, uh, earlier this month. Thank you.
Thanks again. Okay, now we'll move then to the, uh, presentation of the Cape Cod Theater Company.
Hi, uh, this is Chris Powicki. Um, uh, I'm the president of the board of Cape Cod Theater Company, Harwich Junior Theater. And I want to thank, uh, the selectmen, uh, as well as the town administrator, uh, for having us here tonight. Um, we have a couple of items we'd like to, to run through. Um, first, sort of give you an update on, on how 2020 went for us. Um, and then, um, talk about our, um, plans for 2021 and, um, some work we need done at the Art Center, also known as the old rec building. Um, and then also our plans for, um, creating an outdoor performance space at our historic, uh, theater location in West Harwich. Um, so with that, I'm gonna, um, turn it over to, uh, our producing artistic director, uh, Nina Schussler. Um, just so you know, I am speaking tonight from, uh, what some people would call the town of, uh, North Harwich. Um, I live in Brewster, but I'm really pleased to be here. Thank you. So with that, I'll send it over to Nina. Got to unmute yourself, Nina.
The bottom of the screen should have a, um, a speaker button.
Nina, if you can See that little red, uh, red microphone next to your name?
If you check the gear icon in the upper right-hand corner, it should tell you if your microphone is connected.
It looks muted, Joe. You might want to try the spacebar.
Yeah, can you hear me now? Thank you.
We can hear you now.
Thank you. Thank you to the select board and to Chris and our public audience. Cape Cod Theater Company, Harwich Junior Theater Incorporated was founded in 1951 by Betty Boe and, um, at the Exchange Hall in Harwich Center. Um, now we reside in West Harwich and we provide family-friendly, uh, summer entertainment. We've done that for decades, offering classes, productions and in-school outreach programs to our year-round community in Harwich and across Cape Cod for over 25, the past 25 years. We've been year-round. Our vision is theater for all. Our mission is to educate, empower, inspire students of all ages and from all backgrounds to explore and experiment creative talents and aspirations, to experience and appreciate live theater and to develop and nurture a lifelong love of the performing arts. Um, this little theater in Harwich is nationally known. Our alumni are so successful far and wide. Um, and so now I'd like to turn it over to our Director of Education and Community Outreach, Tamara Harper, who will talk about programming.
Thank you, Nina, and thank you to the board for having us here. We're very excited. So when the pandemic, um, restrictions were imposed in mid-March, we were running outreach program in school, in schools. We also had a lot of, uh, education programs at the theater and art center. We were in our first full year of our new dance program that was underway at the art center. We were about to put up our, uh, first main stage show of 2020. I can't believe it's been a whole year. We haven't had a show on the stage. And we were casting for our spring and summer shows. Um, but with COVID, uh, everything was canceled. School outreach programs, the main stage show. We were able to move, um, our classes online and we did that on a pay what you can basis for our community. We also began to offer some online performances. And then very carefully and slowly, we started to bring back some socially-distanced classes here at the theater this past summer, um, and fall. And we continue to do that right now into the winter. We actually have a pretty, um, we have classes here, uh, five days a week, um, for all ages. So, um, we are, we are also continuing to offer online performances. We've had a number of them. Um, we're trying to serve our community to the highest extent possible. And we are determined not to shut down. And that's why we're here tonight. Our budget though, um, which was approximately about $700,000, $700,000 in 2019, has been reduced by $475,000. We've lost that in anticipated program, programming revenues. All of our staff salaries are reduced and we only have two of our, um, teaching artists working part-time. The rest of our directors, designers, performers and our entire, um, robust teaching artist staff are all unable to be employed by us right now because of this awful pandemic. Um, we are surviving on the generosity of our community, our Harwich community, our Greater Cape Cod community, our grant, granters, funders and PPP funds that sadly ran out early last fall. Um, and I will hand this over now to, I believe, Rob or Chris?
Uh, Chris, I'll take over. Thanks, Tammy. Um, so without Tammy and Nina, we're nowhere. And this year, 2021 marks HJT CCTC's 70th birthday. Um, so we're building this year hopefully on decades of formal and informal partnerships with the town of Harwich as well as the broader community. Uh, but we can't survive without a significant recovery of our programming revenues. Um, right now we are limited to offering theater and, and dance classes, mostly in person at the theater building in West Harwich. Uh, the numbers are constrained by COVID-related, um, economic impacts on our community. Uh, we're, we are offering scholarships, but, um, there's also a, a hard time that parents are having scheduling their children with schools, um, being in-person and then, uh, online and switching back and forth. So it's been difficult to, to get, um, you know, students to have the ability to commit to our classes. We're hoping that progress with the pandemic will allow us to be able to safely expand our educational offerings and to use the art center again, um, this spring and summer. Um, but we can't move our dance classes back to the art center until a, a new hardwood floor is installed, uh, in the room at the southeast or southwest corner of the building. Our dance students do a lot of sliding around, as you can imagine, and that floor, uh, that's there is spent. Um, it's been refinished many times. Um, and the students are vulnerable to splinters and some of the nails are starting to come up as well. So, um, under our lease, we have to have permission from the town to move forward with the installation of new flooring. We are planning a new, uh, maple hardwood floor and we have funding reserved for that purpose based on a grant from the Kelly Foundation. Um, we first reached out to the town for permission to do this last summer. Um, it hasn't been a priority, but, uh, it's, it's now become a priority for us. So we're hoping tonight to get permission to, to move forward with this project. Um, but we have bigger plans in mind. Live in-person theater is central to our mission and it's essential to our survival. Uh, but at present, it's neither safe nor practical, um, at our historic theater for the foreseeable future. Last fall, uh, myself and others on the board, and you'll hear from Rob Zappel, a, a board member in a minute, the board and the staff committed to bringing back live theater by creating a, a temporary, uh, seasonal outdoor performance space at the back of the parking lot at our theater building. Uh, and the Bilisakian Family Foundation stepped up to provide core funding for this project based on a unique modular, um, stage and seating area design that was created by Rob. And so I'm going to hand it over to Rob to give you a brief overview of the project and then, uh, we'll finish up and, and, and get to conversation. So Rob?
Thank you, Chris. Can everybody hear me all right? Yep. Great, thanks. Um, uh, good evening, uh, members of the, uh, selectmen or the boards, select board. My name's Rob Zappel. Uh, I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Cape Cod Theater Company and Harwich Junior Theater. Uh, my, our family has been, uh, had a home, uh, up in Harwich, uh, since the early 50s. Uh, and I've enjoyed growing up myself and having my, you know, three children and, and our grandchildren now, uh, enjoying Harwich, especially during the summers and now more in the winters as well. Uh, and as a part of that, uh, I've been working, uh, you know, every summer for the Harwich Junior Theater as a guest director for the past 35 years. Um, so our, our family's definitely invested in Harwich and the junior theater or the Cape Cod Theater Company. Uh, when the pandemic hit and, uh, sitting on the board, I was acutely aware of the financial issues that came with the, uh, with COVID. And as we scrambled around, tried to reinvent ourselves, as you just heard Tammy and Nina both say, and Chris, uh, to try and find different ways that we could, uh, you know, reinvent ourselves into the community and continue with our classes and education outreach. But it became clear that we needed an alternate, uh, performance space. Uh, and, uh, that we, you probably know that in the backside of our property off of Willow Street, they have a large parking lot. It's a gravel parking lot. So I went to work, uh, my background, by the way, is a, uh, professional builder. I design and build custom homes, um, and have of course worked in the theater for, um, most of my life. So putting together some of those skills, I designed what I think is a very low-impact, uh, performance, outdoor education and performance space that basically creates a 24 by 30-foot, a 32-foot wide, uh, stage that's two feet off the ground. Uh, and then a, um, an audience area, which is essentially, um, you know, three-quarter inch plywood, if you can imagine that, or those you use in the building trade to be at VanTech, uh, that's approximately 60 feet by 40 feet, by which we can put movable chairs on there. Uh, there are, you know, two light positions, lighting positions, large, you know, stands, imagine metal poles that are self-standing, self-supporting, uh, by which we have, uh, a total of 16 lights, uh, that will do it and a very modest sound support system that would go in there as well. The idea being that, uh, it would be, um, you're using social distancing on seating. We could seat somewhere in the neighborhood of 40 to 50 people, uh, for classes and for, uh, you know, shows. Um, the, uh, electricity would, you know, come from the, uh, existing building that we have there uh, by putting in, uh, some trenches and bringing power over there. So we don't have, uh, cabling, uh, you know, kind of strewn throughout. And also keeping it to the backside of the parking lot, uh, the, the new performance space and having it fenced off, we would still allow for up to 20 cars to be used, you know, in the existing gravel parking lot. That's kind of a, a, a very brief overview. Uh, I, you know, you can go up very easily. And the idea is that it would be, um, built in components. The stage is built of a, a series of four-by-eight platforms that are, uh, metal, uh, you know, construction with a wood top on their base there, uh, on the top of them. And, um, there'd be a, you can imagine a sailcloth over the top of the stage, really more to protect from sun. It would not be, uh, appropriate. It wouldn't keep the rain off, et cetera. So, uh, that, that's the idea. Are there any questions you might have?
Uh, Rob, before we go to questions, I'm just going to finish up and then
Yeah, I'm sorry, Chris. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so, um, before we, you know, wanted to obviously speak to you tonight and, and go forward with town permits, we felt it was really important to reach out to our direct neighbors. Um, and so Tammy and, um, our technical director, Matt Kohler, have spoken to, uh, the director butters, um, and they received supportive and enthusiastic responses. Um, I think that our, our community really supports the theater, uh, just as we try to support our community. Uh, we filed a demolition permit with the building department, department, uh, last week. Um, there's a decrepit abandoned, um, home, summer home that nobody has lived in for decades. Um, and so we're, we're going to tear that down and the, the stage will go, uh, in that area where the building is now. Um, we plan to submit a, a site plan review application, uh, in early February. Uh, we're really looking forward and, and hoping for a successful 70th year and many more. And we're asking for you, um, and other town officials and the broader community to help us in whatever ways you can. So, you know, we're interested in permission to move forward at the art center, but also, um, we, we just wanted to let you know what we are planning, um, with the outdoor stage and, and looking for your, uh, feedback and thoughts. So thanks very much again for the opportunity to present.
Thank you. Uh, broadly speaking, it seems, uh, you have two issues that we need to address. The first one, Joel, was the, uh, uh, permission, I guess, and that's part of our lease. Can we add that to the agenda to take formal action on that? Certainly.
Certainly.
So we can bring that back to move that ahead. The second issue is the permitting and I think, uh, Joel's already, uh, is on top of that. But Joel, I'll let you speak to that.
Uh, actually I do not have an update on that, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the information I heard tonight is news to me. Uh, but I will work with staff, uh, tomorrow to get, uh, up to speed on that process.
So that, that hopefully will give you, uh, the direction at least you go with Joel on the, on the permitting. Get those in with the, uh, appropriate community development staff. So we can help that. I wish you could help on the financial side, but that's, that's a tougher stretch. But, uh, are there other, Don?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, particularly Nina and Tammy, though, I've got a great affinity for the, uh, theater. Uh, it's, it's been a fixture in town and, I mean, I had the privilege of knowing Betty too, so that was a thrill. Uh, I, I think that, uh, you know, the permitting aside, uh, just as a concept, that, uh, we should do whatever it takes, like we did for people who are serving alcohol outside and, and food, to make sure that this exists well into the 80th year, uh, or, and beyond. So, um, I, I've been a big supporter and the, the two of them know that I, uh, would, uh, helpful with the lease, uh, that was signed in the early 2000s when my last go, I was there. And I personally would be willing to do almost anything to make sure that these guys succeed.
Thank you, Don. I'm sure
While I'm at it, Larry, could I mention one other thing? Chris, uh, and I need to touch base, uh, because I don't want to do anything as a bad neighbor and the Housing Trust is in talks, but it's not fully developed about what it is we're going to do in conjunction with your lease, not to supplant it, but, um, I would love to be able to build support mutually so that you know what we're up to and that it's consistent with what you're up to.
Uh, Don, start that sentence again. So you're, you're suggesting that you
The trust is looking at trying to build, uh, a couple of quads and affordable housing and not to replace the building or to do anything with the lease, but in conjunction, uh, with being neighbors to them. So, Chris had reached out to us and I would like to make sure that we, we talk more about, uh, what we're doing before we actually commit to anything.
Okay, that's great. Other comments?
Larry?
Michael, please.
Yeah, I would, I would echo Don's comments on, um, um, doing anything that we can do to help them survive. Um, that is, uh, is as old as time and, uh, they do a terrific job over there. As they go through the permitting process, I I think it's important. We've been scrutinized in West Harwich for entertainment, outdoor entertainment specifically. So though you've approached your director butters, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, part of the building permit process for outdoor for the building that they're going to demolish, as well as the permitting for a stage would require a butters' notifications?
I I believe that's correct. And there would also be the question of demolition delay, if there is any sense of historic nature to the buildings.
Okay. That's just one thought. The second thought is, as we navigate towards licensing them for outdoor entertainment, we will need to hold a public hearing. And I think that rather than let a lot of time lapse, West Harwich has been one of the parts of town that they show up in force for our entertainment permits. So I think that the sooner we do that and start the public relations part of this, we should do that sooner rather than later.
Good point. Thank you, Michael. Other comments?
Larry, Steve Ford.
I'm sorry, Steve?
Larry, yeah, I I want to echo Michael's comments and Don's. Any way we can support the junior theater is very close to my heart. I think I was in my first play when I was five years old, so it goes back a long, long way. And it was a great part of of my life every summer for many, many years. And I think I was in a few a few plays with Rob Zapple, so it brings back some memories. But anything we can do to to make sure this moves forward, I am I'm fully supportive of.
Thank you, Steve. Don, go ahead, you know.
Yeah, I just have one question for Steve and and the Ford family. Who was the better actor, Michael or you?
It was me.
An unbiased opinion. Ed, did you have a comment?
Yeah, well, well, this is a question for for Steve. I understand you also at times ran a competing theater right there on the corner of Forest Street in Maine.
We did in our barn, that's true, but I think it was just a warm-up for the Harwich Junior Theater.
All right. This is just, it's an odd question for the theater. A lot of the local theaters during intermission time serve a variety of beverages, some you need a license for. Is that the practice at the junior theater?
For years, we have served water as the only beverage that we have for sale during intermission. And at present, we don't have any plans to to change that, although somebody might be able to talk us into juice boxes or something like that. But there's no thoughts at present to expanding our current wares.
Okay, I was, quite honestly, I know there are special regulations in effect allowing us to expedite certain planning and zoning issues for businesses that may serve a cocktail. So if you were running into any problems, we would be able to use that as a way to help move you along. But we'll have to go it the traditional way.
Well, thanks for that suggestion. We'll keep that one in mind.
With the status update, it's clear that everyone on the board is very supportive and ready to do as, and town staff is as well, to do what we can. And I do, Michael, you're to your point, we need to start this sooner rather than later to get the discussion going, especially with the various noise committee activities. Okay, thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Move next to the consent agenda. Michael, you wish to handle this?
Yeah, I'm prepared to do that. And then I'd like to move right through the first three under new business without objection from the board.
It's fine with me. If anyone else objects.
I know.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as follows. Move to approve the Caleb Chase fund request in the amount of $560.66. Move to approve the chair to sign the approval letter for three old post road Harwich refinanced. Tana Harwich is listed as the monitoring agent on the deed rag. Move to approve the appointment of G. Brian Sullivan to the Board of Appeals as a full member, term to expire June 30th, 2022. Move to approve the appointment of Christopher Murphy to the Board of Appeals as a full member, term to expire June 30th, 2023. And move to approve the appointment of Timothy Bailey to the Board of Appeals as an alternate member, term to expire. Term to expire.
That's it, it's June 30th.
June 30th, 2023.
Right.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I will take a roll call vote. Don?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Michael, please continue.
I move that we approve the 2021 common vicular's license to Morning Star Restaurant, Inc., DBA Villaroma, Set 278 Route 28.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? If not, I'll again take a roll call. Michael?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Steve?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
I move that we approve the Board of Selectmen minutes for January 6, 2020, revised, and January 13, 2020.
Second.
Second. The moves and seconded. Any discussion? I'll take a roll call. Steve?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
I move that we approve Section 1.07 of the Harwich Board of Selectmen Liquor License Regulations Request for Closure by Licensed Establishment, Harwich Inn and Tavern, 77 Route 28.
Second.
Discussion?
I have one, Larry, on this one. I couldn't find any information in the packet. What is the request for closure? I think it's important for the public to be aware of what the closure is and for.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my understanding is that the establishment is looking to close for a period of time due to COVID, as have the other establishments.
Do they have a duration now? Michael's right.
I apologize. I'm checking the packet now to see what.
It's not in there, Joe. If we could approve this tonight with the understanding that we'll bring back the letter for the packet next week and just announce the closure dates.
So noted, thank you.
Okay, is that, who seconded that?
I did.
Okay, is that the second? Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I did find this in a packet that I'm looking at. I don't know if it answers the questions. So really, what they're doing is they were correcting the fact that they didn't notify us. You can see that they were closed from this period of time and are actually reopening tomorrow. When staff became aware of it because of a complaint call, we advised the establishment that they are required to do this under the regulations. So this is really a pro forma action to bring them in compliance. I I still think it's an appropriate vote of the board to approve it.
Yep, I'm just going to add the dates to my motion, 1121 to 127, 2021.
Ed, I ask for your second again.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Joe, for that. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor. Ed?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So moving next on the agenda is, Joe, I'll turn this over to you as the sewer modeling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bear with me as I get my notes together. Thank you. So first, I would say to the board, I apologize. I'm sure it feels like the classic movie Groundhog Day, where this matter has come back before the board. So to give some context, this was a discussion that relates to the discussion that the board had at your meeting on January 25th, your wastewater in-depth discussion. Mr. Chairman, as you may recall, we decided to have this topic come back on this agenda, given the breadth and depth of the topics you were talking about last night. Additionally, this is coming before the board because we wanted you to discuss this based on the discussions you had last night and to see if there was a revisiting to this decision. So if I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a statement and then ask our wastewater superintendent to weigh in as well. But if if that's allowable.
Yes, please.
All right, thank you. So as was discussed last night and really from the staff perspective, you heard me say several times last night, and it's a theme I will continue to go back to. And that is that staff, specifically me as your administrator, Dan as the wastewater superintendent, Griffin Ryder as our town engineer, and Carol Capola as our finance director, continue to meet regularly and no less than weekly on all matters related to wastewater. And as you got into the discussions last night about the CWMP, about DHY, about potential contract for Phase 2, which would be Contract 3, this question comes back because it is my recommendation fervently, and then I will let Dan speak for himself, but this sewer modeling acquisition is meant to be a tool for staff to aid them to assist you in obviously modeling, but also to create more information that comes from the town for the town. It's our data. It's not related to existing engineering firms related to projects. And it's meant to advise Dan to inform you so you can make informed decisions. And so, again, I apologize for the repetitious nature of this matter. Again, it was tied into the discussion last night, and it's why it comes back this evening. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I would offer my strong recommendation that I think this acquisition should be approved. And I stand ready to answer any questions or concerns that the board has. But I also want to emphasize that, as with any other procurement, the funding mechanism was presented to our finance director, and she evaluates that based on all of her obligations, not only as your finance director, but as a certified public accountant, as our internal auditor, and as someone who is the first line of defense if should we be audited. And I can call up the original article that relates to the $98,000 in the funding that we're suggesting and would continue to argue that it is a proper and appropriate use of that that funding for this purpose. And Dan can speak, I think, more eloquently to that than I. But what I would offer to you all is, I would not recommend the use of those funds. And I know, not to speak for Carol, but I know the finance director wouldn't either. If we had any inclination or concern that it wouldn't pass muster with the auditors or anyone else, that would be the doing their due diligence on that. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to turn it over to the wastewater superintendent to continue on the presentation.
Larry?
Yes, Michael.
If I may? It it it's my recollection that this has already been voted by the board, so this would be a double action.
I think the question we had, Michael, on that, I agree with that. And I think one question we had was the question about how it was financed. To be sure that was the genuine, I think Joe's answered that, so we may not have to take another another vote. I agree.
Joe, correct me if I'm wrong. We we voted this. It was explained very thoroughly to the board, and the board voted, not unanimously, but the board voted to go ahead with that contract, correct?
So the way I understood it, and there was still the question of the sources of funding. And so before we before we move forward, we wanted that to be verified because we don't, we don't want to gum up the works because there still will be a contract to come before this board for you to accept the procurement process that will have the checklist and all the materials you require, but the central question is on the funding itself.
And so. But that's, yes, I suggest that we go through with the discussion so we clearly understand and agree to the funding. And I would agree with you. We'll have to take another action then.
Well, and maybe Dan could correct me if I'm wrong, because I was I was participated in the Water Commission's discussion on this as well. Dan, this has been approved, correct? And and we were explained what the funding source was when when we approved it, correct? I just don't want to spend time on something and debate something that we don't have to. We've already been down this.
No, I agree. I don't want to take steps. I think it was going to be approved by both boards, us in the wastewater commission.
So.
And really, that, you know, part of the the point for the discussion tonight is that there was members of of both boards that, you know, raised issue with the potential source of funding. You know, so with that, what I really wanted to do was come back and provide, you know, either if if there is concern about the source of funding, if we want to go a different way, what what that path would look like. Or if we want to continue as the presenting, funding is presented, then we can do so as well. But I.
I'm comfortable with going with the way the funding was presented.
Larry?
Yes, Ed?
Having heard the brief discussion thus far, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize this to go forward with the proposed funding sources.
I think Michael's correct. We don't need to do that.
We've already taken an action on this. We don't need to vote it. I I just.
I don't remember approving the funding sources.
We did. That's, it's bells and suspenders, but just go ahead and approve the funding sources so it's clear to everyone. That won't take much time. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I mean, if it's a reaffirmation of the vote that has been taken, I second it, just to clarify.
Ed, Don?
Yeah, especially off of last night's conversation. I think Michael and I agree on this. We we have got absolutely no confidence level that we have, and we're starting to build back trust with the public. And it's really important to be able to create data so that we're not building things that we don't need to build. And frankly, I I remember the last conversation. I'll repeat what I said. I'm not going to vote for a nickel for anything until we verify the need for that by doing the CAD testing. So with that, I'm.
Thank you, Don. We have a motion.
Just one comment, Larry.
Okay.
So I wholeheartedly agree with Don on this and that, and last night proved it more than ever that we absolutely need to do, get as much information and give our staff as 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 many tools as we can to get the proper information to the public. Still going to vote no. I voted no last time. And only because, though I appreciate what the town administrator just clarified, but we have a problem if we're digging back to 2007 and finding $100,000 appropriations. And though it is legal, and I know it's legal, it's still a bad look for the town. The town, and if we had more time, I'd be jumping up and down saying that the town should be approving this at town meeting. I don't believe that we have enough time to go back to town meeting with this because we gave a pretty sizable homework project last night to staff. However, I hope the board takes up sooner than later in asking our finance director and our town administrator to find old articles and bring them back to town meeting and get rid of them. Because spending money 14 years later on something else, whether it's legal or not, is not right. And and it's not a good thing to do to the taxpayers. They should be voting this project.
Larry, Michael, right, we should have some sort of relook at all of these things. I am going to vote for it, but I totally agree with him. There's no way we should have that kind of money sitting around in a closet somewhere waiting for us to spend it a decade and a half later.
Joe?
So I apologize for extending the discussion, but I feel compelled to react to what the board's saying right now, because Dan had said it, and I'll say it, and I don't want to speak for Carol, but I'm sure she'll agree with these sentiments. Given that level of discomfort, we're willing to pull the project, and I fully appreciate and agree with the sentiments that are expressed. In this situation, to me, it's a Faustian bargain. You know, the devil you do or the devil you don't. And we have an opportunity to acquire a modeling scenario that's going to help us be independently informed so you can make your decision-making. The funds that were available far exceed my tenure here, and in fact, I think far exceed several other people's tenure here. And so I do not disagree in any way, shape, or form with what I hear, what I take as a future policy for me to potentially draft on behalf of the board and support it wholeheartedly. But really, the issue is staff's trying to do our level best to find ways without seeking additional expenditures and appropriations, but still keep these massive questions going forward so that we don't cause inertia or inaction. And so to be blunt about it, to me, if there is concern of that level, I think I speak for Dan, because we've talked about it. I would feel more comfortable withdrawing it, other than I know the value it presents to us.
But as Michael said, we already voted this, so.
Just so you know, this absolutely predates you. It predates Dan, predates me. I'm not blaming anybody. I'm only speaking going forward, and the board voted it four to one, and I think that the board is comfortable and gave direction, and there's no blame here whatsoever. I'm only pointing out what should happen going forward, and I'm just not supporting it. But I do believe the board supports it, and this isn't on you, Joe, or Dan, and I will tell you that I appreciate your willingness to change direction on this and bring it to town meeting.
If I could just.
We have a motion, Joe.
Finance director as well, and I will, yep, and I will end by saying Carol and I absolutely understand the overall ethic, and we will continue on with that effort as well.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. No other discussion. I'll take a roll call vote. Michael, I'll start with you.
Joe?
Not to put you on the spot, but your picture is in the center of my screen.
I'm good with it.
Okay. Don?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So we will move ahead on this, and we'll, Joe, I appreciate the efforts to put a policy on this, we can, or at least some efforts. We'll go back and relook at any articles that we need to clean up shop.
Will do.
Larry, I'm prepared to read E.
Okay, please move ahead.
I move that we approve and authorize the chair to sign the FY 2021 Executive Office of Elder Affairs Formula Grant Award to the town of Howard, which in the amount of $55,548.
Second. Joe, do you want to just very briefly tell us, so people on the Washington knows what this is as well?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to direct it to our resident expert who has done phenomenal work on this, and I know she's been on the call patiently. So Emily, if you would like to present, I think this is the best time to do so.
Sure, thank you very much. Thank you, Larry. So yes, we received this award, actually every council on aging in the state receives this award from the Executive Office of Elder Affairs. It's set at a set rate of $12 per senior, which is defined as anyone age 60 plus residing in the town. So that totals to that $55,548 total for fiscal year '21. And we use that funding for a wide variety of services. We cover staff funding, larger purchases, volunteer recognition, other just kind of general day-to-day operations costs. So really, we couldn't provide a lot of the services we offer or some of the staff support without this support from the state. So we're very grateful for it each year.
Thank you, Emily. Any other questions? Well, we have Emily's picture on the screen.
I don't have any questions, but I would just say, great job, Emily. Thank you for getting this done.
Okay, moving on then to old business. Joe, it's back to you on the.
We want to vote on this, or?
We want to vote. I'm sorry. I'm anxious to get done, I guess, Don. We have a motion in a second. Don?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Steve? I know Steve was on temporarily, but I lost him. There's Steve, I, and I'm an aye. So that's motions passed. Joe, now we'll move on to the.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board, and again, not to be stuck in Groundhog Day. I met with the Capitol LA Committee, which included Finance Committee Chair John Chori. We continue to work on refining the Capitol LA Plan for Fiscal Year '22, which you have in your packet, is the statement on '22 itself, and then the full plan, if you will, and I say that with hesitation, because the committee has opted to opt for the five-year plan, which corresponds with the original language in the article that was presented to town meeting that adopted the charter change. Let me just share that for a moment, Mr. Chairman, so where you can see that it was the intent to change it from a seven-year to a five-year plan. And this is all, of course, pending me working with legal counsel to find out the best way to proceed and to have perhaps some articles that will modify that. But what I wanted to present to the board is just an update on the plan itself and some of the changes that were made last week, fairly quickly for me to do, and then really just draw the board's attention to the wastewater items, because again, this topic was meant to follow on your discussion last night as it related to wastewater. And so what I would show, Mr. Chairman and members, is that you'll see on page one of the single-year plan, the fiscal year '22 plan, the Capitol LA Committee has taken several votes to start pushing matters to future years with the hope and expectation that that will ease pressure on this year's capital plan. Having said that, there are, there's still more that I need to do to cut and present back to the Capitol LA Committee as early as next week to finalize that. So you can see on page two that there were deferrals for projects, sorry, deferrals from past years that are in this year's plan. And then you'll see on the page three of the fiscal year '22 draft itself, and let me just put that on the screen for everyone's benefit. And so really, for this evening, to seek guidance from the board to bring back to the Capitol LA Committee for us to finalize our work, but as you can see there, the items related to wastewater. So last night, Mr. Chairman, as you all recall, there was discussion about Phase Two Contract Three, and as I mentioned last night, the original dollar amount that preceded me, that stands at 8.4 million, is still referenced as that amount, even though we all understand that should that go forward, that number is almost certainly going to increase. The other item that I would ask the board for some guidance and discussion on is, as I mentioned previously, when you developed your, well, let me restate that, when we, the board and I, worked on your budget message, you know, there's the phrase to talk about to minimize the use of overrides and debt exclusions. So the capital plan that we're working on still has four items that are tied to funding by debt exclusion, and they are the 1.1 million for the Quint, the 700,000 for the road improvement plan, which is a standard operating procedure, and then those two items that you see on page three related to wastewater. And so I was hoping to get some direction and guidance from the board this evening that will help me go back to Capitol LA next week to finalize my overall presentation on this plan as I get into the final stages of building my comprehensive plan to you all that comes back to you in the middle of February.
Okay, I'll open it up for discussion.
Larry?
Yes, Michael.
I think based on Dan Pelletier's comments last night and the discussion on the 8.4 million for East Howard, I think it would be fair to say that we could push that to an out year, maybe next year. And I think just for planning purposes, we should put a $10 million number on that and get rid of the 8.4 million. And that's not, I'm not saying that we're going to do that next year, but I would hate to put it further out in case there's an appetite to do it and timing that makes sense. I think we all learned last night, there's a lot more to discuss on wastewater and other options. So that would be my comment on the 8.4 million. My comment on the Quint and the road maintenance plan is, you know, looking at, looking at the first look of the budget that we had, it didn't look so great, and we were quite short without the debt exclusions. And I would ask that have the department heads been talked to, and do we want to invite the department heads in to see if we could kick the can down the road a little further on some of these other capital expenses, or not, whatever their suggestion is, and then for us to debate. But have those conversations happened? And if they haven't happened, I think we should facilitate them happening. And I would hate to give up the 700,000 in road maintenance money, the customary article, but I think it was two years ago we decided to cut it in half. And so I would ask for some direction from Link on whether or not he thinks we could get away with that again. We certainly got a fair amount of free road work with all of the construction that National Grid did. But I guess those are my two questions on those. And Joe, what was the fourth item?
The fourth item was also related to wastewater. I apologize. Let me see here. It is the Phase Three Howard Shear of Treatment for DHY.
So we're paying that, oh, Phase Three, DHY. So that's a TBD, right? I mean, we're all waiting for, that's a to-be-determined, take off the capital plan until we get our homework. And then, Joe, as you come back to us, the allocation of free cash is going to be super important to me this year.
Right.
We promised to pay back the money we borrowed out of stabilization in the amount of 573,000. I think we wanted to put an additional amount of money in stabilization if we can get away with it, but we definitely agreed that we would put money into OPEB. And then as we look at the spending of the free cash, I think that that's something that we need to scrutinize heavily personally.
Sure.
Those are my comments.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to respond, if I may. First of all, thank you. The discussions that you mentioned, they will take place next week between those department heads and the Capitol LA, ahead of them coming back before the board, but they'll at least have those conversations with the Capitol LA Committee and I next week, so I can make some informed decisions to make recommendations to you all on that. I understand and I agree with the sentiment on the 8.4 to 10 million to carry over for fiscal year '23, if that's the will of the board. And I wanted to confirm on, and I couldn't agree more with regard to your statement on free cash, select on the cask hole, and want to confirm that in the present draft of the budget, we did, quote, return, if you will. We made whole stabilization by the amount that we took out in fiscal year '21 annual town meeting, and so that commitment has been met and remains in that budget. And OPEB, my recommendation is that we true up for the year that we'd missed and the next year. So you'll see that rather than 125,000, there's actually 250,000 allocated for OPEB. And so you're absolutely right. If we remain with those commitments, and I would argue that we should, it puts additional pressure on free cash for sure.
I agree with both those comments. My two concerns would be the Quint for the fire department. I think we agreed to that two years ago, and that's been, that was postponed one year already to keep our capital budget down. And so that's going to be a tough discussion. I also, Michael, agree with you. I like to double check on the cutting the road fee expenses again, since we did that. We have done that. How many years can we keep that done? But my mind asks additional information. The Quinty does concern me, because you've already postponed that once.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Ed?
Yeah, I just, I guess, have a question, probably best directed to the town accountant, finance director. The items that we've been talking about, and, you know, first off, I'd like to say that I agree with Michael that the Phase Three, or the Contract Three sewer work is probably given intent to relook at that in light of emerging information, probably best to be not only put off because of, to delay the financial impact in this year, but also for better planning reasons. But the other items, which are the Quint and the road money, those are capital exclusions, or debt exclusions. I always get the two mixed up.
Go ahead, Carol.
Yes, hi, good evening. So those would both be debt exclusions, and they are scheduled on the outgoing debt schedule if you were to move forward with these, with their first payments being in FY '23.
Okay. So because they're debt exclusion, they, in essence, bring their own revenue with them, because as they're approved, they go on the tax rate. So the question, it isn't so much the impact on our budget, on our other revenues, it's the impact we feel on in this year, whether we feel comfortable asking folks in town to approve increasing the town debt level, and in actuality, in increasing their taxes over the need for those items and the possible harm if they, we continue to delay them, put them off. But it's not necessarily an argument over the impact it's going to have on the budget.
Correct. And I would add, it's also the look. You know, how does it look in these times that we're looking to root? So I agree with your sentiments.
Yep.
Don, wish you a comment?
Yeah, I'm just supportive of everything that Michael said. So have the conversations and then come back and see what they resulted.
Okay. Steve?
I'm in agreement with those comments.
Okay. Joe, does that help?
Very much so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me. Before we leave the subject, John?
Larry, may I speak? Thank you, Larry. I just want to, are we going to get into the five-year plan tonight, Joe, or is that something for later day, too?
I'll defer to the board at this point.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I presented that information so that it's publicly available. I think in the interest of time and clarity, I'd rather do that when I present the comprehensive budget.
Okay, that's fine. I'm fine with that. But I just want to, just one, I'd like to make a point. But I just want to, just one, uh, I'd like to make a point, uh, since we're not going to do the five-year plan, uh, the suggestion of moving, uh, the East Harwich, uh, you know, Phase Two, Part Three until next year. If we move that eight to 10 million dollars to next year, next year's capital, you're looking at, uh, you know, roughly, uh, 39 million dollars worth of capital. That's FYI, that's all.
I guess my only response to that would be, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Chairman, is that, um, I believe the capital budget for fiscal year 21, uh, was hovering close to 24 million, and I think we brought that in at 14 million. And, uh, the draft for fiscal year 22, uh, was close to 27 million and it's trending downwards from 19 million. And we just knocked off, um, 12 or 13 million. So, uh, I, I, I agree with you, but I want to give everyone a standing that, um, the, the number is here and we've been demonstrating a willingness and, and a discipline to bring numbers here.
I, I agree, Joe, but the, the numbers are going here, but next year's numbers are going there, so.
Right, my, my reference was to next year's numbers, meaning, you know, the, the message to department heads and staff has been, um, even though it's on the plan right now, no one should assume that it's going to go forward. And as we continue to feel the financial pressures, the projects are being pushed off. And in some cases, as you know from our capital meeting last week, projects are being removed from the plan. And so I think, I think the Capitol LA Committee, of which you're a part of, is doing their, their level best to, um, to reduce as much as possible.
Thank you.
Larry, can I comment?
Don? Uh, let me call on Don first, then I'll get back to you, Michael.
And this is addressed through you, Mr. Chairman, to John. I don't know what you would have us do though, because i- if that were left in this fiscal year, I would have to vote against it. So it's premature, we've made a commitment last night to actually look at things and say, to the extent that this is true, we apologize for any mistakes that we made in the past, but we're reassuring you that we, we're not going to spend any more money until we look at the need to spend that money more thoroughly. If this is the earliest that we, uh, could reasonably bring it back. I don't think there's a, uh, a desire from anybody on this board to just dive into the third contract, uh, irrespective of what just went on last night.
Yep.
Thank you, Don.
I agree wholeheartedly, Don, yes.
Well, I, and actually, I just want to, I wanted to thank you, John, for bringing that up. And, and I think that this board, um, owes it, um, to the Finance Committee in Capitol LA to take a deep dive into the capital plan as a whole. And I think looking at, um, uh, looking at moving that, for me anyway, John, would be moving things, other things that weren't quite as important to out years and certainly not, uh, approving a 24, 25, 29 million dollar year on, on expenses. I, I, I wouldn't go there, period. And, and I'm quite uncomfortable, uh, bringing any large capital projects in the middle of a pandemic to town meeting with a reduced, uh, quorum and, uh, reduced amount of taxpayers feeling comfortable to go. I, I think we should, as a town, be holding off. And, and then, um, the budget for me is a big one because the hole is the hole. And looking at a five-year budget, the hole is pretty deep. So we're going to be looking to the town administrator and having some pretty deep conversations about, um, w- we've been throwing Band-Aids on it, quite frankly, and we've been finding money to, uh, to make it work. And, and I think last year's effort was a great year. This year's effort is, uh, unseen yet, but I think we have some pretty, um, tough times ahead of us and some tough decisions to make. So that, that's my thought process anyway and pushing it off, but without getting into the five years, I can't tell you what I would move out to year six or year seven. But there's certainly going to be some things that I won't vote for.
No, I agree, I a hundred percent. I'm glad, I'm just going to have the discussion. Uh, thank you all.
Okay, uh, Joe, did you have more to add to that?
I did, and it's just, uh, to, to let the board know and, um, you know, by extension to the Finance Committee through Chairman Chori and Capitol LA for next week, um, as I get, uh, into the final pass of this budget with Capitol LA, the number one riding, uh, deciding factor for me to begin is, is the capital item something that's going to, uh, help the town remain in compliance, uh, or would the absence of it cause penalties of, of a financial nature? And so, you know, when, when you apply it that way, it's going to become simpler, but not easier. But, you know, there are things on there related to, uh, MS4 storm, stormwater, that if we don't fund the quarter of a million dollars, we are in violation of our obligations. So that's something that stays, uh, and that will put pressure on a nice tab project that quite simply, we can't afford it because if we don't do the other projects, we're going to be in, uh, penalty jeopardy and we can't afford that.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Joe. We'll move on then to, uh, town, uh, excuse me, who's, uh?
Ed.
Ed?
Yeah, uh, just, just a question for Selectman McCaskill. Uh, yeah, um, I, I have some qualms about bringing the, the big ticket items to town meeting. Um, you know, as you indicated, uh, what's your definition though of a large capital item? You know, are, are we talking the road project being large or are we talking the, the sewer project being large?
I would tell you, I would tell you right now, Ed, my comfort level is very low. Uh, so when we talk about a million dollars, that's a lot of money to me. $700,000, that's a lot of money to me. In the big picture, Ed, it's going to depend on where we're at with everything else. And right now I'm looking at a million dollar hole in the budget, um, with some pretty drastic decisions that the board's made. So my comfort level is very low, Ed, but the big picture is what's going to matter to me, not, not the picture that I'm looking at right now. All right.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, last, um, overall point, if I could?
Yes.
Based on, based on the direction this evening from the board, uh, the capital budget, or the capital plan, I should say, for fiscal year 22, uh, has now been reduced by half. And so just this evening, we've gone from 19 million down to 10. And, um, and, and I think it's important to put that out there to demonstrate to town meeting, um, our voters out there that we are actively paring down and will continue to do so, uh, because the comments made by all of the selectmen this evening are spot on. We remain in difficult straits.
Thanks again, Joe and, uh, Carol and gang. Uh, Joe, next on the agenda is your town administrative report.
Uh, thank you. Two quick items. First, you'll see, um, in the packet, uh, that we received word from the Cape Cod Commission on Harwich Mitigation Funds. I had a preliminary conversation with Gail Cohen of the commission and, uh, strategizing some, uh, possible use, uh, for the money that remains. And, um, it, it may be that we can use funds to, uh, remove a required item from the capital plan and perhaps fund it through, uh, the mitigation fund. So more information on that, but, uh, the, really the story there is, um, no stone left unturned. Uh, and really just trying to make sure that we cover everything. And, uh, the second item, and I, I apologize, I'm not sure if it's in your packet, but, um, uh, we have hired the mechanic for DPW, uh, which I know, uh, for Kyle is a tremendous relief. Uh, he is scheduled to start two weeks from now and, uh, excellent hire. Uh, I will say it out there, even though it's public, uh, we continue to, we continue to steal the best from Chatham Ford. Uh, and that concludes my report.
That's always, that's good, I, we appreciate that. I even see Michael smiling on that one, but, uh, it is in our packet.
Very good, very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members.
I go around the selection reports, uh, Don?
Yeah, just leave enough good people in Chatham so that we have something to be able to discuss with in the future. That's my old report, thanks. So noted.
Ed?
I'm, I'm fine.
Steve?
I'm, uh, fine.
Michael?
We just asked that we get an update next week on where we're at with the assistant town administrator hire.
Um, I actually have an update now that, um, so, uh, interviews have been scheduled. Um, if I recall correctly, I'll be meeting, uh, virtually, uh, over the next, uh, five business days with five individuals. Um, I was hoping to have this completed by February 1st, but a quarantine issue derailed that and we're back on track. So, um, I'm very, uh, excited and very hopeful that I will have a name to present before you, perhaps on February 8th.
Thank you, and I have nothing else.
Finally, the comment is, uh, thank you all, uh, especially the board members, we've had two long nights and we've, uh, stuck with it. So, uh, thanks for your, uh, for your great efforts.
Motion to adjourn.
There, we got a second? I'll take a roll call, Don?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm an aye and, uh, Joe, we'll call it an evening now, their town administrator.
Good night, Mr. Chairman, good night all.
Good night.